First item is public comment. I don't have any public, so we'll close that. And again, just for record, we are going to plan on having an executive session at the end so we can discuss the council meeting on Thursday and the additional information that the city just sent out this afternoon. Conversations with council members and those kinds of things. So things to look forward to. Okay. Approval of the minutes of September 5th. Did anyone have any amendments to those minutes? No, we get a motion to approve.
I can't.
Second, all those in favor?
I have.
Eyes.
I.
Okay. That passes?
It's not here.
Okay, consider family opt out position and schedule hearing. Kim, I think you're on for this one.
You have attached to the legal status report, a couple of from the state. If you want to consider opting out. Schedule a hearing. I mean, I was just talking about October 3rd appears to be a good light. It doesn't mean you have to opt out, but we're required to have the hearing for you to make a choice. You really have three, three choices. You can opt in, which means the employees will have funds withheld from their checks. From the state. Second choice is be to withhold funds or checks, but district does not opt in. But you assist those who want to participate in, in getting their funds to the state. Or third, you just opt out. Which would then allow the employees to opt themselves in if they choose to do so. We've got about 70 entities that we represent. Not one of them has opted in. It's just your, by the time your employees would use this, it would have exhausted all the benefits you have. That's not gonna happen.
Kim, one, we did have one question at the staff chat this morning, and I don't understand enough about family to have answered this question, and maybe David did, but we didn't. One of the questions was about what benefits we were able to offer to sub employees. Or I guess, I guess those are classified as temporary employees. And one of the things, one of the suggestions they made was if the organization doesn't opt in for, to family for its full-time employees, is there a possibility of paying a, you know, subsidizing that for our part-time or temporary or substitute employees? I didn't think we could do something different for different employees, but that was one of the suggestions that was made at the staff chat.
Yeah. No, what you would do then is opt out and you could if you choose that second position where you can withhold from those who want to participate. You could do that. So, you know, assist them.
Can, can you just say that one more time? There was just like a crank, a wrapper crinkle going into a microphone right at the same time as you're talking. Sorry. Sorry. Literally at the same time he said that.
You, you have those three options, which are to opt in, to opt out, or to do this middle of the road where you agree to withhold from employees who wish to participate. So it would be that third option. So you'd have to, you could offer that to part-time employees. And then you would withhold a portion. If you want to subsidize them as some benefit in their salary or something, you could do that, but that would be sort of outside.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So Jennifer, there is a threshold of working that they have to, to meet to, to get these benefits. I think, I'm trying, I can't find it here, but I, I just wonder how many of the part-time employees would meet that threshold? I think they have to work. Determine your, I just it was in the fact sheet, one of the fact sheets. So it's a question, I think. It's just more earn $2,500 over the previous year. So that's what it says. So let's see, pay family leave. Colorado employees who have like qualifying condition and earn $2,500 per. So I, I guess most of the part-time employees would probably need that. So.
So I'm not clear on what it is family does and how that compares to our package. And I think it would be useful for the record and for our minutes. If we could have that kind of outline. So could you, and, and these don't actually say that. They give all the information about how to opt in and how to opt out. There's no, at least not that I saw. Really an explanation of what family does. And then if you aren't doing it, you're providing something better. What does that look like? If you could help with that.
Yep. I'm sorry, I don't have the details for that, but I can for the search. But basically what it is, is it's, it's a an insurance program that is sponsored by the state. And it's paid for by the employers and the employees. That's what the withholding is. If an employee does not have a benefit, they can take the claim off to fade and apply. Don't you call.
It's 50% up to $1,100, I think.
50% of their, they go to pay.
A week. Up to $1,100.
And that's the claim for?
It has to be something, a qualified event like
So this
What would be?
Based claim.
It's like, it's like leave, like Family Medical Leave Act. So it basically is caring for yourself. You can also, if you like move. So I just went through this, the foundation, because so but I'm still here too. And, but yeah, I think it's like a qualifying, like FMLA thing. I think also like moving.
It's not, I mean.
Hardship.
So I'm just reading here, obtain safe housing care and legal assistance in response to domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault or sexual abuse. So it is like more than care.
Yeah. And I, I think that you could probably claim that under FMLA too, but I don't know. For fact, I did a long, like freshman year of, or my
This is something that you would, that an employer would do if they weren't offering these benefits already.
Yes.
They would instead pay into this, this program.
As a public entity, you don't have to participate in it at all if you choose not. So you might do it if you are providing other benefits, but begin as a public entity, you don't have to.
Right. But I mean, like the people who do do this will be entities that don't otherwise offer these benefits to their employees.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's sort of one sentence summary then is that this is a project for employees to get paid leave for certain events that are spelled out, and that can be medical, taking care of people, various kinds of things. And in our case, I think from what I understand in the package that we reviewed, our program actually provides a better level of care of the paid leave for those kinds of events than family does. So we could say we're out of it completely. Or we could say we're out of it, but employees, if you feel like you want an extra level of protection, we can withhold for you and send that into the state.
Or they can individually opt in.
And are there advantages to them in having it withheld and sent forward in terms of how quickly claims are processed or anything like that?
Just a convenience for your employees.
Um, would we have to withhold our 0.45%? No.
Not if you opt out.
If we opt out, okay. So.
You also have to withhold, it's a matching.
If you opt in.
Yeah, matching, just like social security.
Yeah. And so when we take action, we have to choose. So do we have any idea whether there are employees who think it would be helpful to have this withheld from them?
You can opt today as Jen described in that as a substitute employee. Who would qualify? I mean, they make more than
So they would qualify for this program, but not for our program. Is that correct, David? So that would be the only use case for us is substitute employees who qualify, who make that $2,500 threshold. But would not qualify for our benefits, our leave benefits.
That's right.
Okay. How, and how many, how many of those people are there?
The number changes from day to day. I'd say on now, Jennifer, 30? Yeah, 25 or 30 people are substitutes.
How do we model the financial impact of that? Kim, is it just a per employee maximum withholding? I, I just, I don't quite understand how we would.
I thought if we, if we opted out, there's no direct financial cost to us because we're not providing the match.
But there's that option three, which is kind of opt in.
Oh, yeah. Option two, where we, we, we opt out, but we say we will withhold for employees who choose to opt in. And then option three is employees can just do it on their own. So I think the only cost to us in option two would be the transaction costs of withholding from their paychecks.
Okay. I see. Okay.
And it would cost them something like, but it would probably be minimal. Point four, 0.45%. So but probably the benefit could be better. You know, for them.
Yeah, I think, I think what you're asking, Jennifer, is there any way, like the question today, was there any way to offset some of that cost for the individual? By providing some level of stipend. And I think we'll have to look at and see if whatever that's possible or not. Then you would have to determine what amount you would want. Do I, I don't know that it's not, I don't think it's illegal. No, no. So it would be a stipend. The library would offer for someone who wanted to enroll in the FMLA pay, LPI program. Provide a stipend that offsets some of their cost of whatever they're.
I think you could offer to pay the tax on their behalf. I think that's the, that's what we're doing for the library foundation. That's the, I think that's how it works if we want to do that.
So I would suggest tonight that we get out whatever questions we have. And then again, Sam and Jim, are you comfortable sort of motoring through this with maybe Kim's help and figuring out what our options are in a more direct way? And then we can come back on October 3rd or if October 3rd is soon.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that the, the outstanding question is the way David phrased it, which is, you know, what do we want to provide some kind of stipend or subsidy to support the subs, the substitute employee base who may want to opt into this program? So I mean, I think that's the only real question. Otherwise, it sounds like everyone's pretty much in the opt-out place because our benefits package is, I mean, I don't want to speak for everyone, but it sounds like we're mostly aligned that our benefits package we're offering to our full-time and part-time employees that qualify for benefits is much better than what Fam, Family Act offers.
Get a list of the benefits.
Say that again, Kim.
Get a list of the benefits out to you.
Okay.
It could be Jen and Sam.
Jen and Sam.
Simmons, Sam.
And Sam, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Is that correct? Does everybody generally opt out? But what we've seen, what we can do for substitutes? Okay. Okay. Is the list that you're providing to them, the list of benefits that are here? Is that what you're?
I can give you, I'll send it to everybody.
Because I am still struck by the one that I read about. And then I didn't realize what that was in this, obtaining safe housing care and or legal assistance in response to domestic violence, stalking, sexual assault or sexual abuse. What would we have that would cover that?
So victims of violence or any kind of criminal action. Are covered under policy. I don't know about housing, providing housing for them.
You know, this is just a K while they're out taking care of those things.
Yeah. So we, so our, our plan does cover that as well.
Is that under like compassionate care or what is it?
There's, it's those definition in the handles.
Crimes, criminal violence.
Okay, okay.
Domestic. A number of different things like that that are.
Okay. The victim of something. Okay.
And then it further extends to, you know, voluntary parts of the plan. So I think it does fall under. You're eligible for it with this bank, the shared bank as well as perhaps compassionately if I can.
Anything else we want to surface to have thought about in this before it comes back to us for action? As it relates to a hearing, what do we need to notice? Just a week. It's just, yeah. So is October 3rd okay for you guys to shoot for to come back with this? Sam and Jen?
I think so. I'm, I'm out of town the week prior to that, but I, I'm guessing we, we can probably figure this out relatively quickly. It's just really, I, I think it's, it's just understanding what the if there's a, if there's a significant cost to it to, and, and benefit to supporting our subs to possibly opt in. So.
And then if you guys could plan on coming back with a recommendation, I think that would be helpful since we have three options. Great. Thank you. Okay. Um, library district director updates.
What's left going on? The employee handbook that you guys reviewed a couple of weeks ago is out with staff. Sam and Jen and I had a meeting with all staff today. Uh, there were probably 20 people, 15, 20 people in the room and another 40 or so virtually. I think it went well, but seeing Jen.
I, I mean, I felt like the questions were kind of softballs. Like I'm curious to see. I'm curious to see what comes in through the like anonymous inbox. Nobody asked us about minimum wage, uh, the city's minimum wage, which we had anticipated having to talk about. We didn't. Yeah, I thought, I thought it was, I thought the tone was really, I think people were grateful that we had given it a lot of thought, that David really framed up. You know, set Sam and I to frame up the conversation in a really positive manner, which is we you know, care deeply about staff. You're our top priority. As we look at the budget and, and balance our priorities and I think people were very receptive to it, had constructive comments and pointed out a few errors and things we should look into, but I, I didn't. I thought the tone of the meeting was really curious and and mostly positive. I mean, I'm curious what, what you two think. What?
Well, I thought it was very positive, a lot of gratitude and very practical questions, just driven by trying to understand. Okay, how is the sick leave going to work in this particular situation? You know, uh, how does short and long-term disability work? There was a couple of interesting questions that were broader, you know. And maybe they weren't so much questions for us as statements to put out to fellow employees, but you know, sustainability and uh, assurances that this kind of collegiate and positive relationship will continue into the future after this board of trustees is, uh, transitions onward. Those were, those were the ones that maybe I didn't expect, but that I thought were good thoughtful questions. And then the, um, the, the sub employee who spoke was uh, that was sort of enlightening for me. I mean, the, the issue had been on our radar, but to hear from someone who, uh, who is living it, uh, ask questions about their possible inclusion in some of the benefits, uh, you know, point, having underlined the different places in the draft of the handbook where it said standard employees and, you know, feeling excluded from that and wondering if there was possibility of, you know, including subs perhaps in, uh, at least some of the benefits. So I'm, I'm looking forward to talking about that with, with David and Jen, uh, as we figure out what we can do about family leave, but there may be other areas we can support the subs. I don't know, but that was, uh, one specific person who, uh, definitely put that category of employee, uh, on my radar. If you follow me.
But yeah, I think it went well. Um. And we are looking at some things to benefit subs, the biggest one being wage increase. Obviously that's not something that they've never been eligible for, um, merit as well, which we're not doing merit. We're just doing a reward wage increase, which will include this up. But there's, he said, they're not aware of yet, but we haven't made those decisions yet. And they won't, we won't until really the budget is in front of you. But, uh, we, those things, I will have an impact. Subs, because they've never been, they have a set wage and it doesn't ever go up year to year. And some of them are long-term subs and we do get quite a lot out of them. So, uh, on other notes, and there's a lot, uh, the benefit broker, um, is shopping, um, for healthcare packages at present. So they're out with the vendors to get pricing back. I hope to have that back for you in the next two weeks. Uh, so we can begin looking at the, the, the plans that are available. And then also, you know, we'll be putting that also in front of staff. And so, and asking staff for feedback on those plans. Uh, so should there be any way that we might be able to improve them at a reasonable cost? Uh, and I will just a side note here, it's, I, I don't know. It's not often that you shop for insurance for, uh, a set of 100 and some employees, right? So and I, you know, I'm trying to think like how they think and how I must have thought when I was 24 years old. And I think I imagined that there was, uh, you know, a benevolent state or a benevolent insurance company that at some points swooped in and took care of me, which is anything but the truth. I mean, most plans and the insurance plan that we are looking at is what is called a level funded plan. So essentially we are self-insuring up to a point, uh, if we, if the employees, and this is for everything, like every doctor's visit, every prescription that you get, every injury that you have, every emergency visit you have. That comes out of the pocket of the, that's library, the library pays that money in advance. Then they deduct from that. The insurance company doesn't spend all that money. They keep it. If they go over, that's when our insurance pays it. So that's kind of how insurance works now. And I'm not sure that uh, everybody has that, uh, concept, but we pay per employee. And so we pay for employee who enrolls and the fee is the same more or less for everyone. And hence why, um, employers do not typically offer healthcare benefits to substitute employees who may work four hours in one month and 20 or 40 hours in another month. Uh, that inconsistent output from the substitute employees is what, what prevents us from saying like, yeah, we're able to invest $30,000 in, uh, those people and our costs would obviously the sub, substitute group is a large group. It's like 30 people at all times. And that would be a large chunk of change for us to forward without really any anticipation of what they're just patient. So, um, more to come on that. I hope to have some costs for you in the next two weeks. IT consultant interviews are underway. It's been great. Karen, Doug participated in an interview today. We're looking at, um, several companies. We had, I believe, seven proposals. Uh, some of which were not fully, uh, complete. We are, uh, we did rank and order those, uh, groups and we're looking at them thoroughly now to hopefully arrive at a point where we can enter into a contract again. Hopefully it was in the next week or two. Where we can bring back a contract to you to begin, initiate that service. The groups that we're talking to are committed to the deadline. Um, and undaunted by it, I should, I think. Is that your takeaway as well? Like seem totally unfazed. Like, yeah, January 1st, completely doable. So.
Personally, I see it as that.
That's my sense.
Yeah. The other thing that I know you've been asking about, and I think it was on your agenda weekly for a while. And I said, we're not going to get to that for a little while. We're, we're closing in on the financial software. So we've really kind of narrowed it down to two vendors. Uh, and at this point, I should think you would have something in the next two weeks, maybe three. Uh, so we still have a lot of references to check and a few more, uh, ease to cross and eyes to dot, but I'm hopeful that we'll have, uh, financial software, uh, by the end of this month, uh, we'll have a selected vendor. Implementation of that. So the implementation of that, just so you know, get your hopes up. It takes a few months, right? To implement the entire financial software. And so it would be ready to roll come January, maybe a little bit sooner than that. Um, but it's not what we will be preparing our budget this year. Yes, maybe we will not be preparing our budget in the current financial software.
Yes. Start it later so that we can focus on getting pay velocity off the ground first.
Do we have a bank account?
Bank account, yes. Uh, we have routing numbers and all that good stuff. We don't really have an account yet. Um, Kim has some paperwork to do with the treasurer's office in order for the transfer to occur. We have training yet to do, which we believe is going to be scheduled next week. But we can't, so the, the, the bank account is there.
Okay.
We know the number to route the money to from the treasurer's office. At that point, then we'll have to have training on it and get up to speed, uh, internally on how to access.
Training like from the bank or?
Yeah. So the bank will provide us with some training.
Thank you.
Uh, our financial software, or not a financial software, our financial consultant, one of the very first consultants we hired, that firm will also assist in that transition as well. They've kept a price all the way up at the updates from, uh, but I think you have a false impression because they sent me an email today saying, now that you have your right account. I'm like, can I hang on by horses? We have it, but yeah. We have this. Leadline was the project manager they hired. They'll be coming to speak to you, I think in a couple of weeks. The group is doing great. So they had a great meeting, I think with the staff and leadership team today. It's using nice software. I think you guys will enjoy that kind of overview. Uh, putting together a projection that's more staff focused, so being the staff being the audience so that they can see what milestones we're looking at along the way that are mostly impactful for them, which don't necessarily include the hiring an IT contractor firm or implementing financial software. They're mostly interested in those milestones, which expect them. And so we're working on something there.
I stopped there just a minute. So that's going to be the 26th now? You said a couple of weeks for the project manager update.
When is she coming? Is it next?
We had it tentatively scheduled for the 19th. I think it is next week.
I think she's coming next week. Yeah.
Just checking.
Margot, the person.
Margot is the one we're working with. She's the primary for us, but we have a team of three. I do not remember all of their names. Do you, Jennifer?
All of us, Maine and then Kristen, something.
It's okay. I don't, I don't have to know any of them.
So the projects they're working on, obviously Payocity is one of the big ones, right? So the implementation of Payocity, they're also doing overseeing the project and how are these pieces kind of all fit together and making sure that like uh, we're all working towards the similar deadlines where there's a lot of overlap. Where there is a lot of overlap, obviously is within IT and finance, um, with regard to Payocity. And so there's some important milestones to hit along the way. Um, but yeah, I think they, they're putting together a nice package. I feel, have an opportunity to talk to them next week.
I'm sorry, I missed the name of the company.
Leadline.
Leadline, L E A D.
L E A D line. Yeah. They're at a little bit.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You have a question, Doug, or you just?
No, I was just saying, I didn't have to tell her names. But thank you.
Yeah. And so the other big part, which is coming down toward you soon is, uh, budget process, right? So I, the, I anticipate sharing with you probably by October 3rd. Kind of the things we are looking at, what to expect to see in a budget. On October 10th, we will bring likely spreadsheets, uh, with the budget. This is all conditioned upon we know what the healthcare costs are, because that's something unknown at this point. And, um, and then October 10th would be the first reading with the intent that we would be able to get the budget approved by you upon second reading by October 24th or 31st. Depending on how much input you want to, how much changes we have between initial, uh, I'm going to try to get some of your feedback on that October 3rd date if possible. Cause we'll be outlining a lot of the larger, uh, elements. Staff compensation. You know, capital spending. You know, staffing, the, the, the cost to restore staffing levels back to 2019, some of the expansions. Getting stuff, hours increased.
So just to make sure I heard you correctly, October 10th, now we're looking at the first reading.
First reading in October 24th or 31st, depending on, I, I really want to do it the 24th, but see how much changes we have.
And then right now on the 10th, we also have the Prop HH discussion tentatively scheduled. So that's good. I think we need to have that conversation as we're looking at the budget before we get into the hearing. So.
When is that?
On October 10th is what we've tentatively got that. And I think you're still waiting for confirmation from Robin Moore. Um, whether she can.
That is not coming. Yeah. Robin does not feel competent to pronounce on HH.
Okay.
I believe Kim has some people. Yeah, you know, if you want, after we have the meeting with, uh, Kim brings, I mean, if we can always reach out and see if we can find a see if we can find a bond attorney who wants to come in and make some pronouncements. I, I feel pretty confident that Robin is right, that nobody really has, nobody's the expert right now. There is not an expert.
And at the Cal Conference, you're presenting on Prop HH?
It's on new legislation, but it will include Prop HH.
So is there somebody else there that's doing that? No? The special district conference this week, though, is doing that, and you have people there, so we'll get that information, and I think they've got a vested interest in figuring this out, so. And, and do we know what the deadline is for when we have to decide if we are opting out, whatever opting out means? I'm still confused about what that means in terms of this.
No, there's no deadline in the statute, but we have to certify it maybe December tenth or so, so by that time we'll have to.
And part of what you're looking at is whether we've already done it because of the timing of our election, yeah.
Yeah, the way the language is in the statute, you can't tell. They say that if you've detapered, you don't need to opt out. Or I mean, I'm really.
It's not.
Everything we'll have to do is publish notice of a budget hearing. Should we go ahead and publish for the twenty-fourth? And then you can always open the hearing and continue it to the thirty-first if we're not ready.
I think we're talking about having a first and second reading with public on both of those. I don't know what our legal notice requirement is, but it seems like it'd be useful to notice it twice.
Okay, so we'll publish for the twenty-fourth?
First, we'll do it for the tenth. Second, for the twenty-fourth.
If, if it gets to the tenth and it's not ready, we can have a continuation then seventeenth. Then that kind of pushes us back to, for certain, for the twenty-fourth and thirty-first. So I, I, I expected there's going to be feedback. I'm going to try to offset some of that by giving you a preview of kind of what we're expecting to see on that. It'll be mostly in a narrative format, because I don't know that I'm going to have locked in by the time to write the memo product or the healthcare costs. Finally, I.
So we'll call that a budget preview on the third.
Yeah.
And then public hearing with first presentation of the budget on the tenth.
What were you thinking about? The cut, cut over date, does it still seem doable or? Yeah, okay.
And nothing, nothing that's happened so far has moved us from that target. I'm trying to think at this point, what would? You know, it still kind of comes back, para will not be an impediment, I do not believe. Really kind of comes back around where we said three months ago, it's IT and, and para, and para, I don't believe it's. I'm in, I'm in regular contact with para. You know, we're just waiting next on some forms, but we're a new affiliate. They received and reviewed and approved of your motion that you made, I don't know, a month or so ago, so that's all done. Everything's kind of seems to be on pace. We have a contact that changed from just the setup to now where there's a liaison that work directly with me to do whatever paperwork we need to do. Yeah, if it takes the bank another two months, that might be an impediment to get to transfer. Like, like I, I, I'm really hoping that, like, it's been four months, like, it was one, one of the staff members said, like, this was like the first thing we did, like, the, it was like the second meeting. I think you guys made a decision on a bank, and we have been at it now for literally four, four months, and the money is yet to transfer, so. I, I'm hopeful that's imminent, but I keep saying that.
But they've got incentive now because they're going to get money.
Yeah.
So can I ask one more question on this before we go on? So right now, we have review and approve staff employment and benefits program on the seventeenth? Or the twenty-fourth?
It can be either one, whichever one works best for you. It, you know, we will have gathered all of the staff feedback for you by that time at present, like, we did get the meeting today, and there were a slew of emails, but nothing major substantive, a lot of careful reading by the staff to catch all the anomalies, ambiguities, so that's great, but just point, I don't know.
So just to make sure we understand the sequence, so October tenth, we'll see a preview, and we'll see a first first hearing on the budget, so the cost of the staff employment and benefits program will be built in on October tenth. Then we'll see the details on this on the seventeenth, and then do the final approval of the budget on the twenty-fourth.
So the, the kind of one of the pending questions that we have to resolve with personnel subcommittee is around the city has announced, obviously, a twenty-two dollar and forty-four cent minimum wage. We're going to, you know, we are currently, we've run roughly the cost of what it would take for us to do that. It's not substantive. What is substantive or what we're trying to determine is the cascade, right? So it's like when you create compression by bringing up the bottom, then there's very little difference between them and the next phase up. We typically have maintained about a fifteen, I think the current rate difference is twenty-one percent. But that's because we have a lot of tenured employees, but we're trying, we will try to maintain that delta between the entry level job and the primary job, which we have, which is the public service coordinator position, that is like ninety percent of the staff that you encounter on the floor and about thirty-five percent of all the staff to work for the libraries, public service coordinators, and so they would not be impacted by. I mean, maybe there's one or two that might be impacted by the minimum wage move. But the majority of them would not, only to the extent that those people below them are now making like five or ten percent of less than what those employees make, which currently we have, it's set at around twenty-one. It's current, the current number is twenty-one percent difference in, on average, wage, but you know. Across the state, it varies, fifteen percent is right about, right? So that will be, that will cause a cascade. Shovers don't make up that big of a work group. They are a sizable work group, but dwarfed by the size of the public service coordinators, who would be the ones who would be partially impacted by everybody at the bottom coming up, right? So it's like, we'll have to look at that, and we'll, we'll come back to you with proposals at various levels for how, where to get them, and we'll see how palatable that will be for you. You know, to be clear, right, so like the older public library currently pays pretty well, right? Like, so we've done the analysis, like, the leadership level, staff, myself, Jennifer, we are in that ninetieth percentile within the state. The public service coordinators are currently within the ninetieth percentile of the state. The shelters prior to an increase in minimum wage are probably in the ninety-ninth percentile. We're unaware of any shelving group anywhere in the state that is paid the same as what our employees are. So moving their wage up by, I mean, could be, I'm sure they'll be grateful, I'm sure, as Sam said, it's a huge impact to them and their lives. That's important, but, you know, so then we're talking about moving that next group up, which is already in the ninetieth percentile. We will probably be moving them to the ninety-fifth, ninety-seventh, ninety-eighth, I don't know. But that, but that's where I'm really looking for you to say, like, you're comfortable with that, and that's what you want to do. Fully recognizing that that is correct, that, that is the implication. Any other questions on the big stuff? An email came into you a couple of, a month or so ago. I just want to let you know that we're still working on it. There was a question about.
Split parcel?
My taxes are high and I'm, I have a split parcel in there. Doing this, I, from what I can tell, and even from the email that the gentleman sent in, when Johnny followed up with him and he subsequently followed this email, I believe it's two parcels and one is being taxed and one is not. That's not something that the mapping would have ever done, but we're meeting now. City GIS cannot confirm that. We're going back to the county. The county is now revealing it, and it's, you know, property lines go where they want to, right, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't, you know, the taxing district tended to follow voting precincts where it could and where it couldn't, we chose not to split any parcels. That was a conscious decision, so I don't believe there is a split parcel, which is how he characterized it in his email, and I understand that he owns maybe multiple parcels, and some of them are in the taxing district, and some of them are not, and that creates a complication for him, but I'm not sure that there's, I don't know what the resolution will be, but I, I will hopefully have that answer for you from the county in the next six months. No, in the next. In the next, well, it's in the next week or so.
Because, I mean, people had already received their tax bills and paid them, so it was like, it's kind of late in the game.
Well, he's a good forward.
So yeah, but also I thought he may end up paying more taxes. I don't know if the air is going to, the air is going to benefit him, that's my point. So, because if he, if they look at it and go, oh, wait, well, we should have, you know, included that one.
Well, if it's a split parcel, maybe.
Yeah, well, it's also. Yeah, I'm not going to comment on counties.
Yeah, if it's separate ownership, I mean, it's, I think, I think that what I took away from this is this is really not going to be our problem.
It's not our problem.
The assessor's side.
Yeah, the assessor's got to look at it.
They're looking at ownership and parcels, and it's not a boundary issue with us, so.
No, it's not.
And I let the gentleman know that we were still looking at it, so.
Yeah.
That's everything I've got. Thank you.
Thanks for the staff on how hard you guys are all working on this all. I know you guys are working way more hours than you know, you should be, because, but I know you, you're hustling, so thank you so much.
Yeah.
And hopefully convey that to the group of people working on that. Thank you.
I really think it's a very good package, honestly. I, there's some, there are some trade-offs, but it's a really good package, and I appreciate that you guys are willing to go that far, so that's awesome. And there was a lot of gratitude, not necessarily expressed in the meeting, but I had a lot subsequent to the meeting and prior to it from a lot of different staff members, so I think a lot of staff members do see the benefit. We did get hit with an onslaught of emails, app, app feeding. Some clearly very well thought out about, mostly, again, it's, it's, it's careful reading. I think I had asked Jen and Sam to suspend, you know, we were going to start from the beginning, like, with the assumption that maybe half the staff had not read it, but you know, never underestimate librarians. They had read it.
The library will be closing in fifteen minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
So can we talk just a minute about upcoming meetings, just so I've got this straight, and then I can update this and send it back out to folks? So next week is our regular meeting. We've got on there right now, so the JLF, the teamwork arts team is going to stop by just to introduce themselves to us because they're here. Presentation on staff, of staff feedback on employment benefits package. The project manager update, those are our substantive items. The twenty-sixth approved the IT migration contract. The financial consultant review the budget model. We review staff feedback on employment benefits package. I think we had that as a formal presentation next week, and then review afterwards. I don't know if we need another presentation since you've done it the first time. I know if that makes sense. So on the nineteenth, we have presentation of staff feedback on employment benefits package. And on the twenty-sixth, we have trustee review of staff feedback on employment and benefits package. That's duplicative.
Yeah. I, today's the twelfth. Let's, let's give it to the twenty-sixth, so push it off to nineteenth.
Okay.
I honestly think we're going to have everything we need to know by, but I, but I want to have a chance to talk to Ken and Sam about their feedback and what changes, if any, they would like to make, recommend.
Okay. We also have our hope and dream of finalizing and approving the IGA on the twenty-sixth of September.
Twenty-sixth of September?
Twenty-sixth of the week.
And maybe push it a week? Or two?
Again, we got to get it to council before December, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So the third.
My birthday's on the twenty-third of September, so if you could ask Mark Wallach as a birthday present to me to just approve all of our recommendations for the IGA, I would really appreciate it.
Sure, he'd be happy to do that. So on the third, we have the family hearing and the budget preview. On the tenth, we have the Prop HH discussion and the first public hearing of the twenty-twenty-four budget. The seventeenth is our regular meeting. That's review and approve the staff employment and benefits program. And the twenty-fourth is the second reading of the budget, so this means our dream of dropping to two meetings in October is a dream. But we don't have anything on the thirty-first.
Oh, yeah, we shouldn't have it.
We could not meet on the thirty-first.
Maybe wear costumes.
We should just all go trick-or-treating together.
And after that, we start moving into things that are not necessarily related to the transition. I mean, obviously, the IGA is going to have to drop in there somewhere, depending on what happens after the council meeting and how quickly city staff gets the next version back to Kim. But we can work that in there whenever, I think, whenever we need to. So that all makes sense to people? Okay, great. I'll try and update this and get it out to folks then in the next couple of days. Thank you. All right, any subcommittee updates? Okay, trustee matters, just to mention, everybody, the BLF gala is October twenty-sixth. If you haven't planned to go, it'd be a great idea if you get a good turnout there. I think they're still taking taking reservations for that.
I think they just started.
Oh, they, no, they've actually been sending them out.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Yeah.
I'm just got mine.
Oh, did you?
Yeah.
Well, anyway, just wanted to mention that to you. Any other trustee matters?
Sorry, we did have one subcommittee update from budget.
Okay.
Committee. We talked about a recommendation about when to talk about our long-term investment.
The library will be closing.
Management.
Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
So Sylvia, David and I just chatted about that really briefly and thought it might be best to talk about that early next year after we've, you know, paid off our debt to the city and so on. So I think, just so you know, we, we, we chatted about that briefly and as a follow-up to our conversation a few weeks ago.
I'll just put a placeholder then for early twenty-twenty-four.
Okay.
For that, thank you. And thank you guys for drafting that response to the other comment we got in from guy who wanted to know if we had opted out of the five percent and what we were going to do and all of that, so I appreciate that. We dug that out to him too. Okay, Kim, your legal update.
The only other thing I have is not the status report. I don't think there's any more actual items, but I've been getting some contracts now that the city is not renewing. They're just passing them back. And one of them is with the Marmot Consortium, who is also one of my colleagues. Need to get a waiver from you to go ahead and do that work if that's okay, and I'll get them from them as well. It's either that or get new attorney.
What do they do?
They provide a lot. Yeah, Marmot's a big one for us, right? So we are now a member of the Marmot Consortium. It was previously, we were in the Flat Irons Library Consortium. Even then, we outsourced our ILS management. It provides the public interface that you see when you go on the catalog. It's pretty big. Now we're a member of the library as of this year. So one of the big things that they did, and important, is that they have for some time managed compliance with regard to any kind of credit card payments that we do from transactions for payments of machines, so like, the city never really wanted to take credit cards, and so we actually, that, that's been with Marmot for, gosh, I don't know, eight years. They've managed that to keep us compliant with all regulations that have changed.
All of our patron data was in Marmot, okay. So do you need a motion?
No, as long as nobody objects.
Okay, does anyone object to waiving Kim's conflict so he can do our contract with Marmot? Seeing no one, okay?
I need, that's it for me.
Can you just comment on the draft BVSD IGA? What, what would the time of that be?
The which I do?
It says draft BVSD IGA. That's not anything to do with our IGA, that's their existing IGA. This library and BVSD probably around, is it around your research thing?
Who wants? Yeah, that's actually done. The draft is done, it's come back up for comment, and Jim will eventually come to you.
Yeah, so for that one, Benita, we entered. Yeah, so for that one, Benita, we entered into an agreement with the school district. Oh, I don't know, four years ago now, and so by having a student ID, it allows you to have access to all of the library databases, as well as come in and check out a limited number of books, just with your student ID, you don't have to get a library card. And so that permit has been in place for quite some time. Unlike with most other patron library cards, we do not track any personal information. It's just that the child's name and what school they belong to, and so that was the there, there's a lot of privacy things around the school district, so we just complied with everything they asked for, and and for us, it's great because the students get access to the databases.
If I remember right, they can access the databases from the schools too, you don't have anywhere. So, yeah, so it's a great benefit for the students.
So we've seen this from the library commission side, haven't we? Yeah, so I just wondered what is it related to the district, if there was something else?
It's just a whole bunch of these agreements that are rolling over to us, and this is, so you'll see a whole bunch of those contracts.
And expired for a while.
Yeah.
Now it's not.
It was only since August.
Since August.
Yeah. So. No one getting it signed every year because the, they're gone during the summer, and that's when it expires.
Did I send it back to you, Jen?
Make it so that it doesn't expire in summer?
Yeah.
Did you just change the?
Yeah, we noticed it just be perpetual until some.
Okay, that works.
The library will be closing in five minutes. Please complete your library business and exit the building. Thank you.
Maybe not, because. Maybe not, because what we do is we purge all the students every year. And we enter them each year because they don't want us, they don't want the student data to be a holdover, so, and and student body changes, right? So every year, so it's it's literally like a thirteen thousand person influx into our database. So then we purge, and then we upload all of the data again each year.
Surely, the purge can be a term of the IGA rather than some.
I should hope so. I don't, I don't know, the school had a, it was a hard contract. When we first did, it took us two years to get the contract, like, let's not mess it up, like, it's like.
So I'm saying, it's simpler just to write in there that the next time it expires, it'll be October thirtieth. But, you know, whatever, like, just pick a different day, so it's not expiring in the summer, if that solves both problems.
I don't know, I, like, let's try anything, but like, they kind of hold cards and that, and for our interests is not monetary or anything, we really just want students to have access.
And it currently has a termination provision, just to tell us in thirty days it's terminated and thirty days it's.
Yeah, from either side.
And and then, Kim, I just wondered will we see an invoice from you at this point or? Can we see those?
Um, you can't, I don't have, I didn't bring it with me, but yes, okay.
Yeah, no, I just, I was curious, I hadn't seen that, and so I just wanted to see it. I just didn't know if it had been submitted or what their process is for it. Do we have a formal process? Or just not?
Well, we, we, the process will be, so we cannot, we are not going to pay legal fees with the city's loan.
Right.
So we're waiting on the bank account, so we have not paid the attorney yet. So we're, that's one of the reasons why we, there's a number of contracts that are going to be coming up, like, we need that bank account soon. But one of them is the lawyer, obviously, we have, because with the city, there are very strong, very clear guidelines around who can and cannot hire a lawyer, and we just don't want to go there with the districts, because that's not a place where we want to go.
So you may recall when we set up the bank account, we adopted a financial policy that set a limit that said the director approves everything under this limit, and anything over that goes here, so I think that applies.
But since it's with the trustees, it seems like we should see it, you know, the staff speaker transplants.
That's it for me.
Okay, great. So let's get a motion to go into executive session to discuss the IGA matters.
Before you do that, I should say, I run, I've run the calculations of the model several times. I, I know it's come up multiple times. I, I believe we can make a large payment, I don't know how much, by April, twenty-four, and we can pay it off by August. It's, it's dependent upon the so from what it looks like last year and I think previous years, we are roughly getting like a third of the money by April, and then by the end of August, we have probably around seventy percent of all the money that we're going to receive from the county treasurer. We haven't, honestly, we have proceeded yet, we get the receipts from them, so by that point, by August, I should think we would be able to pay off whatever remains.
That's great, thank you, that's helpful.
I'll move to move into executive session.
For a second? There'll be a second. And reconvene? Do we have any other business tonight? All right, let's adjourn. Thank you all. Thank you. Very good meeting. And I will be very glad. I hope this is my last time ever having to sit and talk to city council.